Good evening and welcome to the Douglas Planning Board Meeting of Thursday, June 22, 2023. This meeting is being broadcasted on local access programming. Is there anyone here in the audience recording tonight's meeting? Okay, that being said, the first item on our agenda is reorganization. I'm going to call for the board for any nominations for chairperson of the planning board.
I nominate Tracy Sharky.
Second.
Just taking nominations first, then we'll do the votes. All right. Saw the selectmen do it some copy.
I'll nominate Jake Schultzberg. He can deny it, but I'll nominate. Just change things up a bit. I'll second that.
Okay, any other nominations? Okay, the nomination window is closed. We'll take a motion.
So moved.
For one of those two individuals. Take a motion from someone?
A motion for?
Chair.
Well, we just didn't.
No, it's just nominations.
Oh, make a motion that Jake Schultzberg, if he would kindly accept to be the chair.
I'll second that.
Is a motion been made and seconded? Is there any further discussion? Mr. Schultzberg, do you accept the nomination?
I know Tracy's up for it, so just whatever the board would want.
Oh, she's up?
She would like, she would be interested, so whatever the board would want.
Yeah, I'd like to hear. But okay, but if she says so, I would agree with that, I guess, I suppose.
Okay, there's a nomination and a second for Mr. Schultzberg as chair. Any further discussion?
Further nominated?
Point of order?
Thank you.
Point of order, please.
Are we, are we, you're not going to close the nominations, Jim?
Nope.
Okay, all right.
Not yet.
Yeah, okay, all right. And a motion's been made and seconded?
For nomination of Mr. Schultzberg.
Okay.
Okay. I'll do a roll call vote, please.
I'll nominate Tracy Sharky as chair.
Okay.
I'll second that.
The second. Okay. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? I'm Mr. Sharky as chair.
To go secretly out here.
Okay.
But in light, if, can a board person ask a question?
Of course.
Jake, are you suggesting, and I want, honestly, that you think that Tracy would be good again and you as maybe vice chair? Just the way you see it?
It's gone well.
Okay, then I would.
Yeah, but it's whatever the board wants.
No, I understand. I would, I made the nomination, it was accepted, so I can't withdraw that, so.
You can't? We haven't voted?
Well, then.
You gotta, you gotta close the nominations first.
I did.
You did.
Nominations are closed.
In light of whatever, you know, in order of things, in light of information that has come forward, I'd like to keep the board as currently constructed and.
Would you like to withdraw your nomination for Mr. Schultzberg?
As much as I love the guy.
Okay, I'll accept the withdrawal. We have one nomination on the table for Mr. Sharky as chair that's been seconded. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please start.
Schultzberg, aye.
Ray Marks, aye.
Rex Schlesman, aye.
Aaron Sorkar, aye.
Rich Preston, aye.
What are we voting on?
Tracy. Tracy, or whether you want Tracy to be the chair again, or yes or no?
Okay, yes.
Mike Sorkar, aye.
Okay. Mr. Sharky is now the chair. We'll check nominations for vice chair.
I nominate Jake Schultzberg, second, third.
Any other nominations for vice chair? Okay, nomination window is closed. We'll take a motion.
Motion to nominate Jake, vice chair, second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Schultzberg, aye.
Ray Marks, aye.
Rex Schlesman, aye.
Aaron Sorkar, aye.
Rich Preston, aye.
Mike Sorkar, aye.
Mike Sorkar, aye.
Okay, thank you, folks. Turn the meeting over to Mr. Schultzberg as acting chair this evening.
All right. First item on the agenda, Mr. Benoit's going to be absent, I think, the day of a scheduled July meeting, so we're looking to possibly change the meeting date.
Yeah.
Dates for, what are we looking to change from in two?
Mr. Chairman, I respectfully ask the board, alter the schedule to move the meeting up one week from July 27th to July 20th. I did reach out to Ms. Sharky, she did say that that works for her. I just hadn't had a chance to speak to anyone else.
July 20th?
Yes, please.
That is a 28?
Yes.
I don't have a vote for that.
I have no problem with that.
I got it.
Do we need a motion to change?
Make a motion that we move the July meeting from the 28th to the 20th?
I'll second. At 7:00 PM.
Okay, so, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Next meeting will be July 20th.
Thank you.
So, just needed to get that over so we know what push things to, if needed.
Yes.
Okay. Citizens form, anyone in the audience here for anything other than what's posted on the agenda or online? Okay, CNN is none, moving right along. A and R's, first one, 247 U Street, David and Claudia Sherman, possible votes. Anyone here to present or provide information on this?
For the record, Margaret Bacon, talent engineering. Let me pull over one of these leads here.
Sure.
All right, this is for 247 U Street?
Yes. Are you here for both?
Yes, I am.
All right, yeah, 247.
All right, so I'm representing David and Claudia Sherman. They own a piece of property, just to get your bearings. Here is U Street, Martin Road, right here. So it's almost like the intersection there of Martin and U Street. They currently own this, it's almost 14-acre parcel right here, and he's subdividing out a two-acre lot with 200 feet of frontage to the front. He'd like to eventually build his own house up in the front.
May I ask a question just for, I'm in the area.
Yeah.
Where is the access, the shared, well, through a, is a driveway that's shared with roulette?
It's right here. That's almost right at that intersection.
At the corner.
That's correct. And so he, for this house, they're going to continue to use that. He has an easement.
Right, an easement down to there.
Correct.
But the parcel that he owns is where exactly? The whole parcel, right currently?
The whole.
The whole thing, okay. And that's where he's looking now, back there?
Correct.
Yeah, I've not been invited, so. And then he wants to build up in there. Okay, cool.
Correct.
Any other questions from the board?
Meets all criteria.
Mr. Benoit, any comments? No, sir. Meets all the standard criteria of our A and R. Okay. Board, any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to endorse the A and R for 247 U Street.
Motion made by Mrs. Wicker, second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
247 U Street, all set. Next, 74-80 U Street, Judy Valier.
Okay, this is another parcel, further up U Street. Here, just to get your bearings, Bald Hill Road, right here. So it's kind of right at the, between Glen Street and Bald Hill Road. She owns quite a bit of properties up in that area. And what she'd like to do, yeah, all the existing properties she owned, I don't know how many acres altogether, but what she'd like to do, her existing parcel right here with her existing house and barn, she would like to realign her lot lines because she has a shed and a barn here. So she'd like to take her existing property, rearrange the lot lines, and then put all her structures in one lot. And then, so basically, it's rearranging lot lines for the same owner, Judy Valerie.
So it's not another build of a lot?
No, she's not really asking for another build of a lot. No, she just wants all of her parcels on, all her buildings on one parcel.
Right.
And then, you know, this is a build of a lot over there, always has been, but she's not looking to do anything like that because it's got the 200-foot frontage in the area. But I think her long-term goals eventually is to donate this to the land trusts.
Question, does this create a landlocked land for, lot for lot two? Does this create a new?
No, you can still get up and through here.
Okay.
Tight, but you can.
Right, well, what she wanted to do, there's an existing stone wall here, so she wanted to use as much of that as she could for the lot line. Goes right up here. And then there's another stone wall, it's not pieces of it, and then she comes straight across and down.
But, if, may, sorry, through the 200-foot that's already on the parcel on the right that she's proposing, that already has the 90,000 square feet without the triangles up top or with the triangles up top?
This?
On the right, on the right side. The other lot that's not.
This right here?
Yeah.
This was one lot, two acres with 200 feet of frontage.
But without that upper triangles, that would not make the 90,000?
Without the, no, it still would have 90.
That's a separate.
Yeah, yeah.
No, what I'm saying is if, if it, that triangle alone by itself, the lower triangle to the right, is not 90,000 square feet that's being proposed. On the other side of the rock wall.
Other side.
To the right.
Yep.
That, that triangles.
No, that is not 90.
That's what I mean. So you need, she needs that square footage and she wants to, and what's the, maybe it doesn't matter at all because it's nothing, it's in the future. What's the width of that access line to the back?
Oh, right there?
What's that, 30 feet?
I'll get a scale.
25 feet? Doesn't really matter, I guess. It's not, it's not the course.
I'm gonna say.
20?
Probably 20 feet wide.
I mean, she has what?
Porky choppy.
100 acres there, right?
Potentially.
What's that?
She has 100 acres there.
She has a lot of acres here. Like I said, her long-term plan is not to develop any of this. Her plan is to donate it to the, transfer it to the metal land trust sometime in the future.
Yeah, well, it's not the course anyway, so we're just voting on this here. All right, so I'll bring it in and just want to make sure Mr. Benoit meets all A and R.
Yes, sir, it does.
Okay. Yeah, that's what we have to vote on, so.
That's what it is.
Board, any other comments, questions? Entertain a motion at all?
To endorse the A and R for 74 to 80 U Street.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have, moving right along. First public hearing. This is going to be for Anthony Jennings' application for accessory apartment, AA-230525, 12 Meeting House Lane, possible votes. Just read the posting. Legal notice of public hearing in accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, the Town of Douglas accessory apartments owned by law, section 3.3 and 9.3. The Douglas Planning Board is holding a public hearing on the application for Anthony Jennings regarding an accessory apartment special permit. The property location is 12 Meeting House Lane, assesses map 196 parcel 13, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Any person interested or wishing to be heard should appear at the time and place designated. Visit www.douglas-ma.gov for the agenda and Zoom information. Copy of this application is available for review during regular business hours in the Douglas Community Development Department, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. 01516. All right, Mr. Benoit, can you lead us off with some information as to what we're looking at? Oh, meeting is now, public hearing is now open.
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I believe that either the owner or the engineer, I believe, is here and would like to perhaps speak on behalf of what their intent is with this accessory apartment.
Okay.
You guys want me up there? Well, you seem occupied. Is it okay if we sit?
Yeah, even if you just sit closer to the table so the mics can pick you up.
You guys got questions for me?
If you can just say your name and address.
That's why you need your mother here, so you don't have to bring girls. I'm Anthony Jennings at 12 Meeting House Lane, Douglas.
Okay. All right. Just what's going on? What's, what's happened at the house? What are you looking to do?
Special permit to do an accessory building, which is actually just an apartment of a three-car garage that already have a permit.
So you look for an accessory apartment. It's not, is it called an accessory building? You don't have an accessory building.
Apartment, apartment. It's mixed words in your answer quite a lot.
Yeah, you'd have a garage under which you have a right to have trialers and you have space above.
Yes, sir. A couple of comments came up at tech review. I can share these with Mr. Jennings. The first question that came up was whether or not the utilities have to be tied into the main house. We found out the septic did not. Port Health would have to regulate that one way or the other. But the water was a question that the building commissioner had. Now, typically, this is something that's handled post this permit. It's handled by the building department under the building code, something like that. Since I don't have an answer on whether or not the way it's laid out is fitting for this development, I urge the board to consider possibly conditioning and approval if they went that way, as such, just ensuring that the water was signed up by the appropriate town entities prior to the issue of the permit. The other thing that came up was a note of discrepancy in the application where it's listed as 860 square foot on the application, but on the plan, I saw numbers that were higher. I just wanted to, I share this with Mr. Jennings, just ask him to try to clarify what the actual square footage here is for the board this evening.
Is there an answer for that?
That's what I'm hoping to get. So I have an answer. I mean, the engineer will just basically, I hire engineers a lot, and they'll only do the first floor, which is the three-car garage.
The footprints.
Yeah, so.
I read your numbers. 790 without the stairs, so it would be 860.
Yeah, so I mean, technically, it's, I don't know. It was, is it 860 for the apartment?
It makes sense.
Okay.
It's there.
I'm glad we brought up utilities, so I can have a look.
Yeah, what are your intentions for the utilities?
So, there's, I mean, definitely a handful of utilities. So, septic, I think I provided the site plans. So the site plans, which I paid a lot of money for, were engineered definitely to make the most common sense of how I was going to get a low-level accessory building up into, you know, something that makes sense. And the only way that was going to be done was tied into the tank. If I went in through my house.
Makes sense.
I would go in through the ground level and using the ejector pump in that tank, I would have to go five feet into the air almost immediately. And my plumber is not going to sign off on that, and I don't know who's going to sign off on that. In addition to that, my house is on a 200 amp, which most houses are. If I have to draw from that for this accessory building, which is going to require, you know, an equitability, the livable square feet is going to require apartment, you know, stove, heating, et cetera, I'm going to need 200 there. If I have 200 at my house and then need 200 somewhere else, I don't know where I'm going to grab that from.
If you, you could go to propane, gas, or certain things, and.
I'm not going to do that.
Well, that's your choice, but most of the town has it, so. It's, we have.
I've already contacted with National Grid, and they highly recommend it. Instead of me bringing 400 amps from the street to my house, that I just brought, which they've okayed, you know, to this accessory building. I'm a builder, so I build my own.
Normally, you would put 100 amps. Service should be okay for that, I mean, generally.
Through the chair.
Mrs. Wicker.
The meter is supposed to be one meter.
One meter, yeah.
Period.
Yeah.
200 amp, doesn't matter. I mean, I can run a 250 amp while the, the wife coming in.
With air and?
Yeah, I have central air and stuff like that, so.
I worry about.
This, yeah, Mrs. Jennings, can't debate.
Through the chair, the bylaws, I mean, we've never, all these accessory apartments we've had throughout, even if they're included in everything, they all have stoves and everything else, market ways and the whole deal. There's never been the question whatsoever ever brought up. The reason that we do that is to keep it fair amongst everything. And I think we've been pretty consistent as far as keeping it on the one meter.
All my additions, whether they're 1,500, 2,000 square foot additions, they're pulling off the main meter with the sub panels. So that's, I hear what you're saying, but that's between you and National Grid, one meter, so, yeah.
The other utilities, I see five.
Board, any other questions or comments?
Sorry, in addition, so there's more utilities?
There's more, okay. Water?
So, I, I have a water filtration system in my house, and currently, the quail services, the way they put it in, I draw, I mean, I could only, only have one shower going on at a time. I made sure when the engineers did the site plan that they, you know, did the right correct distance for mass, whatever, which is, I think, like 25 feet or something like that. So the well is right there. I'd like to be able to just draw right off of that, so I don't have any concerns with any pressure in my house with filtration system.
But if you have one well, you're not thinking of another well?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying.
So you can upgrade your well pump, and then you can upgrade the pump in the house too. You know, the actual reserve reservoir, and then increase your pressure based on.
So he's going to take off the check valve in the house, put it on the well, so then that check is going to run both.
That's a plumbing thing. I don't know that answer.
So I can keep the pressure in both places, hopefully.
Mr. Benoit, regards to the water, that is more getting passed by the plumbing inspector.
Sure.
Right. As far as what he does with getting water to there, won't have any bearings on this application, correct?
The other is just.
Hold on, Mr. Jennings, hold on.
Okay. I feel similar, and that's why I kind of mentioned like a general condition, some of the effect of, and ensure that all utilities installed in accordance with the approval of the building.
Okay.
And the board.
Okay. Mr. Jennings?
The financial burden to be able to bring in the water line from my house to the accessory would require me ripping up my concrete patio. That's a big idea.
Okay.
Just for the.
Although financial doesn't really, in general, I mean, you go to zoning board appeals, they don't want to hear it. You know, it's not about financial. It's a reality.
It's a hurdle.
It's a hurdle and a reality, but it's, it's whatever the plumbing inspector's doing.
But also, by the way, your permit application didn't specify any of those. So, I mean, I'm not sure why we're having a conversation.
Right, it's not, it's not at this point. It's going to be your plumbing inspector, building inspectors, they're going to decide.
Yeah, I agree, and I have them do it all the time.
Yeah, that's what Matt was saying.
Yeah. Chairman, I have a question. Just, I apologize, to circle back on the one meter thing. What is the policy with that? Where does that come from? Is that from the electric company?
No, certainly, we did that way there. If somebody was to try to get somebody else to move in, utilities, they'd have their own separate utilities. But keep it, this is only supposed to be for family members or stuff of that matter, so.
It's an actual, like, in check, someone, keep it in check.
So that was passed way, way, way back with the one meter. Even when they passed the buy, the amendment to have a separate entity, it said the one meter shall supply both.
How does that work if there's an easement on the property?
Hold on, Mr. Jennings. It's a, you gotta kind of go through me and not like debate everyone back and forth on it. Do you have a question about our policy on the?
No, I'm just, I'm trying to understand the policy myself because I don't, I didn't see it anywhere in the bylaws or the application, so I'm trying to get the.
Did they take it out? What?
Mr. Chairman, what we have is a very general set of standards. And the one that ties, I guess, best into this, or, or, the standard's 10 and 11. And number 10 is talking about if the lot's not connected to public sewer, brighter taming, building permit, Port Health will certify the septic system. That's number 11. Excuse me, that's not what I'm talking about right now. But number 11 just reads that the construction of any accessory apartment must be in conformity with the state building code requirements. And that's it. So when it talks, when we're talking meters, utilities, or anything, it's a general umbrella that really just puts it under.
So it's not in there, you're saying?
That's the main reason.
Used to be listed.
And that's, every one we've had, we've always had that. I just don't know where it came from. Yeah.
But as far as the regulation goes, it really puts it under the per view of the commission. Ken, and this is what Ken explained to me on the first day, and I looked for it within the hour. I didn't see it, so here I am.
Then everybody can build a second house in the property.
Well, I, we can cover, cover that, so. I asked because I had put in 30 years ago, but I have a barn with 100, a separate 100-amp service and meter. So I have six meters.
But no, it's not a dwelling unit. It's not a accessory apartment.
It's a separate freestanding building.
Building, but it's not a, not a dwelling unit. You don't have a occupation or occupancy permit on it, yeah. So I guess it would, I would ask you, Mr. Benoit, would that now be how the board would vote on it, or it's?
And you just hold it to that standard, the construction of any apartment must be in conformity with the state building code requirement. I just took it a step further, said ensure utilities acceptable under your opinion on the building. They're all underground, so.
I'm just trying to now think of where we've had that. It's always been that long stand, every accessory apartment we've had it, we've always made them.
Ever since we.
Is it possible to show that it wasn't codified? Maybe it's a good idea, but it just wasn't codified.
I don't know.
Here's the other piece of that, and this is probably where we found our discretion. The planning board may require more or other appropriate conditions in order to protect public health and safety in the single-family character of the neighborhood. Board may also allow deviation from the above conditions where necessary upon a finding that such deviation will not be detrimental to the neighborhood. So that's, that's where your discretion comes in.
Okay.
Right, the goal, through chair, the goal is to keep it, it's a, it's a single-family home with an accessory apartment, and after the accessory apartment is no longer in use, it's supposed to be turned back into a single-family home. Kitchen's supposed to be removed and all that. You can't make it an apartment for anybody. That's, that's the main idea of an accessory apartment.
That's probably where we've always had our leeway in.
We've always tried to keep everything one meter, one water system.
Because then it opens the floodgates.
It's supposed to be a single-family home, not an apartment.
All right. So this is a public hearing. Just skip it to the, anyone in the audience or anyone online that has any questions or comments in regards to this?
I have another question through the chair.
I just wanted to just see if there was anyone really for this in the audience. As far as you know, Matt, is it you?
It's difficult.
Okay.
Is that one question?
All right, I'm just going to have Mr. Marks do his question first, then.
Who's, who's your tenant?
Grandmother.
Grandmother, okay.
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 It's your mother, wife's mother? Is it your mother or your wife? It doesn't, doesn't matter. It's your mother, cool. That's good.
She lives in Arizona. She comes up six months in a year.
We just need to know if it was a blood relative. That's all we need to know. I don't. Question from the audience, if you can just say your name and address, please, for the record.
Eric Mannes, A B D House Lane.
You're gonna have to, either, can you move up a little bit just so the mics can pick you up? You're kind of soft spoken.
Eric Mannes, A B D House Lane.
Okay.
So my other question is, I'm assuming because it's a, it's a low-level property, that in the event of a power failure, that the septic system would have no means to function because it has no lift lifted up to the current septic system? Is that correct?
I don't know if.
It's on the ejector pump.
You have a Generac or some sort of backup with all this technology, even electricity and?
I mean, it's a great question.
I have one, it's important.
On the ejector pump?
I don't have, I just took it for the house. Again, again, you.
Okay, I'm sorry, I apologize.
I don't know why it keeps happening. It's, it's not a back and forth thing. It's.
There's no backup to the ejector pump on that septic. That all wasn't designed by the.
Okay. So, so has your question been answered?
So there's no, so in the event of a power failure, there'd be no way to have any of the septic system functional on that, on that accessory apartment?
Do you know?
I don't know if there's another sewer guy here or not, but I think for those 1,500 gallons, the way they're designed is once they reach a level, I mean, they, there's alarms on them, I believe, so they, they could sound off if the power's off or if it reaches an unacceptable level. I've only looked a few times, I'm not.
So I think, I think I would, I would probably, should this pass, this special permit pass, I think your best way would be ask to go through the, the building inspector. Because we're not septic design engineers, you know, if this does go forward, I think, because if it does go forward, it would have to, the house has to meet all those standards, so I think, should it pass, that is a good question to refer to the building. So, I think, should it pass, that is a good question to refer to the building inspector. Yeah.
Obviously, it's all well and watered.
Yeah, and I wish we had an expert that could answer it definitively, so. Any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, may I ask a question to the board?
Yes.
Do you also have a septic system, sir? Or are you on town service?
We're right next door.
All Stonegate have a septic, all septic. Just so it's good system, if you have it.
Yeah. All right. Are there any waivers or anything with the application?
No, it's, it's...
Straightforward.
The board's discretion under F12, they want to modify it. They feel it's in the best interest of public health, safety, and character. My recommendation, just because of the utilities and some of the things being unknown, is to condition it, if it were to move forward, condition it as such to ensure utilities are acceptable under the opinion of the building commissioner.
You said 12, I'm just, what are you referring to, 12?
3.3.3.
All right, I see, because I thought you were referring to the application. Taxes are up, everything's good, all right. All right, so board, questions or comments before we move forward? Actually, I think I'll close the hearing. All right, any other questions in the audience? All right, entertain a motion to close the public hearing. Motion made by Mr. Preston?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, by Mr. Sokrat. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Public hearing's now closed. All right, so board, what do we think? Anyone up for making a motion or anything like that?
Question?
Yes.
What was the condition you wanted to put on it?
Condition to ensure utilities, utility services are acceptable under the opinion of the building commissioner.
All right, I don't have a problem with it if we go with that condition.
Yeah. What about the electrical meter?
I'll make a motion that we approve the accessory apartment.
Yeah, so with that, does that include the electrical meter? Do you want, should it...
With the condition that it meets all the guidelines according to the building inspector.
I'm just trying to think if anyone wants to...
So, you do what?
So, Ernie's motion is to pass it as long as it meets the...
Building commissioner satisfied with the utilities.
Including the meter issue, right.
But do, does anyone wanna extend on that, or...
No, we're, I think we've always required it, but we never put it in here, but we've always had it. I think with us not having it in here specifically, at least on this time, as per, you know, if he has to put on a meter, he puts on the meter. But I think in the future, we should look at this. He can run a garage, whatever, without a 100 amp sub panel. I mean, no problem whatsoever.
I agree, like, we've always...
But right now, it's not here.
I didn't realize it wasn't in right...
Right, we always did it under the one paragraph where the planning board may require more. That's what we've always done it under in the past. We've always required it.
We do have, we do have some discretion...
Correct.
...in our decisions on these.
Right, right.
Like I said, I'm in favor of keeping it as one-family home.
As one, right.
Sometimes it makes a hardship, or it's...
I mean...
...go the other way.
Right, because I mean, back in the day, every house built only had 100 amp service. So, the idea of 200 isn't enough. I mean, I've seen houses, I mean, I got two sub panels on my 100 amp. I got no problems. I have such a layer, I have welders, I have plasma cutters, I have everything. I end up having an issue. So, it can be done, no problem whatsoever, but on this here, we see where amount of meter is okay, then I can roll with that.
Okay. We have a two, excuse me, we have 200 amp at the park. Everything, high tunnels, greenhouses, the whole thing, and we have multiple 100 amp services. You know, I don't care, if it's a loophole, it's in there, you call this out on it, and it's probably a good thing.
Right, we have the discretion where we can oppose it if we want it.
Okay. All right, so Mr. Marx, you wanna keep, clarify your motion?
National Grid doesn't like having two meters on a single home most of the time. It might not fly with them anyway. They need, they'd have to revise the plan. So, that's just something to think about. They like, if it's a single-family home, they like to have the one meter, and that's it, not two.
Run itself.
You wanna keep your motion?
Yeah, I'll keep my motion.
Okay. So, Mr. Marx made the motion to accept with the modification, or...
Yeah, and special permit with the condition to ensure the utilities are approved by the building commissioner. Sorry?
Mr. Marx made a motion to accept, approve the special permit application with the condition that utilities meet the...
Signed off by the building commissioner. Okay, that's reasonable.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Motion made by Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Zwicker. Any further discussion?
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Nope.
For the public hearing, please.
Yeah. Board, any further questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Approved, and any opposed? unanimous.
Next steps are, we will write a decision, have it drafted, signed by the board at a future meeting. When there's an appeal period, we'll be in touch with you to get you your decision, but congratulations. Get that over to you.
Good luck.
Thank you for being so well behaved, young lady.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, public hearing continued, 292 Northeast Main Street LLC, application for site plan review, SPR-230425. Possible votes. Have a request to continue to the next July meeting. Any updates on it, or just, are we just going for peer review, or...
Yes, they did, I don't know if peer reviews are in the record or not, but ultimately, they didn't have their plans updated in time based on the peer reviewers' comments.
Where are those comments?
They were in our previous packet, so we had our peer reviewers.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And they were gonna give us modified plans on Tuesday. So, look, that's not gonna give our reviewer any time to get comments back to us, so best to consider the continuance, fine tune their plans, get them to us for our next meeting. They didn't put a meeting date in the request, because we weren't sure when that meeting date was gonna be, so just the next available.
Which is going to be Thursday, July 2nd.
20th.
Did you open the public hearing? Did you open the public hearing?
It was already, it was open from, it was continued, so it's still open. Thursday, July 20th?
Yes.
Yes, 7:00 PM, so that's when it would be.
Is this the date?
July 20th.
July 20th?
Yeah. Just need a motion to...
I'll make a motion that we continue the public hearing for 392 Northeast Main Street.
Second.
7/20/23.
Motion made by Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, move to the 20th, 7:00 PM. Okay. Next up, what time is it? All right. 7:30 PM, public hearing, McIntyre Loom Incorporated, application for special permit, Is this a new? Okay. I just don't have the...
There's something negative.
Okay. Town of Douglas Planning Board, legal notice of public hearing, name of applicant, McIntyre Loom Incorporated. Name of owner is State of Merit D. Tatro, and second generation partners LLC. Date and time of public hearing, Thursday, June 22, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Subject matter of the hearing, the applicant is requesting a special permit from the Douglas Planning Board pursuant to the Douglas Zoning Bylaws, Section 9.3, and Appendix A, Section D, Industrial 1A, project description. The project is, the project consists of outdoor manufacturing use, including processing of loom and other organic materials, including the mixing, by mixing them, by use of screening plants or other screening mechanisms, as well as the use of heavy machinery required to accomplish the same. Project site and location, off Davis Street, Douglas, Mass. Assessment map 168, parcels 9, 10, 11.1. Place of hearing, Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Hello, all right. All right, public hearing is now open, and we have two gentlemen here for...
McIntyre, John Norman McIntyre.
Tom McIntyre, also McIntyre.
All right, what's going on, gentlemen?
So, we are here for you, we are currently tenants on lots 3 and 4 of Legacy Circle, the subdivision that was approved by this board 18 months ago ourselves. We are currently working on lot 6. Last year, you all approved an additional permit for outdoor manufacturing on lot 6, and a site plan, and earth removal permit on lot 6. We, in the process of working that site, space was tighter than we anticipated. So, we leased these two lots from second generation potatoes, so that we could process the loom on this lot. We just did that one for it in lot 6, so we want to do one on lot 3 and 4. Doing that by screening plants. Believe you all, we've released the lots at your last meeting, and now we're just here to get the special permit that will let us process outdoors.
Okay.
That's the basic estimation.
Mr....
Factors if you want in the special permit.
Mr. Benoît?
Mr. Chairman, so, and speaking with Mr. McIntyre and Mr. Palmer, there seems to be a temporary solution until you get your site ready on lot 6, is that correct?
We have a one-year lease of the potatoes that would expire in February of 2024.
Mr. Chairman, so, I mean, they're operating, I don't know what the machine's called, sifting machine?
Sifting, thank you. So, there's a machine on site, there's a screening one, right?
Yeah.
We met at tech review with the town departments, just handled a couple of questions. One of the questions that came up from the fire department was, are you going to be storing any fuel on site, any sort of tanks? But that's not the case, believe, the machine needs to be fueled, you have a truck that would deliver the fuel, but it's not gonna sit there on site. That was the main question that was answered. Dust control is certainly a question. I would recommend that if the board wants to consider any sort of condition for dust control, if they do. And just based on the use and the temporary nature of the special permit, if we issue it outright, it will stay with the land. So, my recommendation would be to issue this to applicant if you're willing, if you're moving towards a motion to approve. This way...
Especially where they want...
Yeah, the applicant and non-transferable. This way, if the applicant, the lease runs out and they vacate the site, the special permit also dissolves. Those are my recommendations. I know it's a under-construction subdivision with some lots. There's already a bond posted on there, I think it's 130K or so. Curbs are not in yet. One of the things I asked was, is it possible that cost use of trucks is to destroy any curbs or anything like that? But the curbs aren't in yet, they still have to do top course and all the rest of the course, stuff like that. It's covered under the bond, so I would assume there's no need for bonding for this use, for the temporary use.
There's nothing to it yet.
Those are my general comments, so to end tech review, I didn't have any others either.
Okay. Board, any comments, questions?
Through the chair, Mrs. Wicker. I know loom's expensive, but washout in the road from that site, you gotta reverse it, so if you had a heavy rain, does it wash out? What's the whole game plan there?
So, we, we have not had any washout yet this year. We've had plenty of heavy rain. We have the whole front of the lot, we're not using, using the back portion, the whole front of the lot is three to four feet lower than the road. So, and there's a drain there that's protected with river depth that's above the height of the road.
That'd be the only thing, with the drainage and all that, so that we don't get a situation where...
Silvering down the road.
Yeah.
Everything's in the...
So, you're kind of on a reverse pitch from the road is what the site is, in reality? You're saying that?
Yeah, well, drops down, then...
Yeah, coming back up.
And I'll add that the road is pitched downward, too, so anything that does wash out is gonna stay on Legacy Circle. It's still under construction, and we have contracted sewer sweepers to pick up the excess.
That's all, because, I mean, we've had issues where you had a rain and a washout. Before you know it, the loom's all, I know you don't want it in the road, because it costs too much money to screen it, but just trying to keep it, you know, all that way.
Anyone else, Ernie?
What's your timeline on how long you want this special permit to run?
So, our plan is to be in lot 6, you know, with the rest of our operation come February, end of February 2024. Obviously, we can't see the future, so I have no idea. We're certainly on that plan right now, and our goal is, you know, it's very obtainable, but again...
You don't want to be more than a year, but...
I don't want to be more than a year.
I have no problem with a year. I think that's, I wasn't expecting to...
Yeah, but, you know, you never say never, so. The plan is that we'll be out of there by, you know, March first, we'll say, but we do have the option for a year.
Yeah, I just wondered what your timeline was approximately, does it be exactly?
I...
Are you asking for a permit for a year?
I'd rather not spend the money, you know, when we don't, if we didn't have to.
Now, Mr. Sokrat?
Yeah, if, through the chair, maybe we can run it, you know, this is going to the applicant. That was a great idea, Matt, by the way. And also to the date of their lease at this point. If they need to come back to us, they can come back to us. It's all very simple.
Would that be something we can do, like, do like a year, like a...
I wouldn't tie it to a timeframe. I know we do that with accessory apartments, but it's really hard to enforce.
Yeah.
If we just, if it's just issued to the applicant...
To applicant, okay, that's good enough.
So, the lease vacates, it just...
That's fine, okay. So, this is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience or online have anything they'd like to add, question? I guess it's empty. All right. Anyone wanna close the hearing?
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion to close the hearing made by Mr. Marx, seconded by Mr. Sokrat. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing's closed. All right, board.
Any answers, Mr. Chairman?
That would be great. So, we're looking to, for a motion to...
Motion to approve what standard conditions, so it's being, standard special permit condition is... But the two conditions being that the special permit is issued to the applicant and is non-transferable, and that the applicant's responsible for dust control. Question for the board, actually, question for the board, I know it's a closed hearing, but it's the applicant's...
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Do you guys have a standard template for dust control plan or anything you can provide us? Friday? So, we have a water truck that we, we run between, it's registered, we run it between our facility in Hopkinton and, you know, when we were on the train there, but now... I'm sure you have something you've issued to the town, say, here's our plan with dust control. See if they sort of talk about it like that or anything like that. It has to be done pretty frequently, so... So, I'm just, then I'll generalize. Have been responsible for dust control.
And what was, are you fine with the standard conditions, any issues?
Yeah.
Yeah. Any reason why we can't issue our boil plate conditions?
Yeah, boil plate conditions plus these two, that being issued to the applicant, non-transferable, responsible of dust control.
Operational hours is still the same and everything?
Yeah.
And that's boil plate, pretty much.
Yeah.
So a motion in that regard.
So moved? Motion by Mr. Wicker.
Second.
Seconded by, please, Mr. Greco? All right. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Unanimous.
So just a decision, what is signed at the next.
Sometimes the voices in that corner there come across very similar.
Thank you. Good night, you guys.
Good luck, guys.
Is this, this is not a copy, so that's in writing.
Yes. You are. I must write that off.
Okay.
I'm trying to get ready.
Two online.
My bladder's shot.
We'll just go right down the line. Additional business, request for modification of special permit to 69 Wollam Lake Road, AMP Solar, possible votes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Benoit.
We have a couple folks on the line for this one. We have a request that came in from AMP Solar representative Lawrence Cook, who is on the Zoom call. We also have our consultant, well, there are two consultants, I'll kind of walk through the process here. AMP Solar is looking to close out their permit with the building department, okay? And one of the things that was flagged was vegetative cover and the general closeout of some of the Asbillys to the planning court. So we engaged Jeff Walsh, who was our consultant at the beginning of the detention basis at the, at the bottom of the hill. So he reviewed the rest of the site, we asked him to bring out a registered landscape park.
Landscape park, RLA, I believe.
And it's Alice Webb, who was on the call also, who reviewed some of the landscaping that was our concern. One of it was, some of the cover hadn't taken fully seeding, because we noticed the pollinators were mixed in on the, on the site. The original approval didn't have pollinators inside the array, it only had them outside of the array. So it took the vegetation a little bit longer to take. And what they wisely did was mix it with some grass seed. So the grass seed seemed to take, and I wanted an opinion from a, from a landscape specialist on this before we came to the board this evening, and that's what Ms. Webb has provided us in the documentation. I'd love Mr. Cook to kind of kick off and explain what the next steps are and anything else that I missed, and I'd love for the board to at least ask Ms. Webb, kind of her opinion on the coverage.
Mr. Cook, if you can just introduce yourself for the record.
Yes, thank you very much. My name is Lawrence Cook. I am the construction project manager for ASD Wollam AMP Solar LLC, which is the entity that owns the Wollam Solar Farm. AMP Solar is the company that I work for, who owns the, owns the project. I will advise the board as well that AMP has recently been, been acquired and been rebranded as Pure Sky Energy. So future correspondence may come in with Pure Sky Energy, but the, the name of the entity is still the same.
Okay.
But I, I think Matthew actually covered it pretty well. We've got a, a few areas that need patching up, we'd like to patch them up with the pollinator mix. So we're seeking an approval to have the pollinator mix within the, within the array area. And we've been to site with various members of the town, plus the third-party engineers who've provided a report that, that kind of agrees that, except for the, the areas that they've highlighted that need addressing, the vegetation is generally working as coming and is sufficient for the, for the project. But I don't want to talk over Alice.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
One second.
Just wanted to introduce Ms. Webb as a.
Okay, all right, Ms. Webb?
Yes. The vegetation that I've seen under the arrays is where the pollinator mix was seeded is adequate, primarily because another grass, a grass seed was apparently included in the mix that is doing fine in the shade, but the mix itself, that's listed on the plans, that those species need sunlight, you know, fair amount of sun. So I, in general, I don't recommend seeding just that mix that's listed on the drawings beneath solar arrays, but only, only if there's another grass seed, or that it's primarily another grass seed that's included in. I don't know what type of grass they included, I couldn't identify it, but it's doing well under the arrays.
It, it will be the, the same mix that was spread that included that grass with the addition of an annual rye grass for some immediate seeding and stabilization in those areas.
All right. So, Mr. Benoit, what are we looking for to continue or to, you know, because it's a request for a modification.
Correct, yeah, so I think there, this being not a public hearing currently, this is more of a request. So this is a large plan, okay? It's several pages, I think it's like 25 page plan, it might even be more than that. Lawrence probably knows that, because I've just had that going. On one of the final pages, there's a line on it that reads that the pollinators weren't supposed to be in the outside. This modification would change just that little piece of that plan.
Yeah.
So, but it was a big deal because this involves stormwater runoff, AMP Solar up above, you know, it's below it. Okay, so we wanted to make sure we covered this, okay? So I think the modification, in my opinion, is minor in nature. I think they've done a good job mixing the seed that, from Ms. Webb's comments, and I'm glad we got the comments from the specialists here this evening. I believe that they still have to fix, or at least seed some, some patched areas, but once those seeds take, I, I would imagine that this board would be pretty satisfied with the work that's.
Do we see the seed taken this summer, or is there going to be more of a fall time with normal germination?
We, the, the current quote that we have at the moment includes for a certain amount of watering, so we've been prepared to, to look at getting it done sooner rather than later. But also, there is a bond that is currently posted with the town specifically for vegetation for stormwater. So this isn't a question of us looking to kick, kick anything down the road, but we will, we will look at it on a weather basis because it costs, it's going to cost about $3,000 every time we want the, the area watered. So we'd like to keep it to a minimum if we can, but at the moment, things, I was actually on site earlier today, things look okay for it now, and we'd need the kind of two to four week look ahead.
Okay.
For the initial establishment of the, the grasses.
All right, so I guess we'll either go around or a motion if the board would want to make this a, a minor after, after questions.
A statement was made that it's rye grass, just rye, because the rye will be gone, then they're going to have nothing.
No, the, the, the rye grass is used specifically as it's a, it's a fast-growing.
Correct.
An annual, so it provides the initial stabilization while the, some of the pollinators and the other grasses that take a little longer to come in.
Okay.
While they establish. So it provides the instant cover. Those areas will be touched up with the rye grass if we are moving into the fall without full establishment again. There'll, there'll be a winter rye that would be planted there and in the spring as well. We also plan on using some eruvial control measures as well, either by eruvial control mats in some problem areas, or the further use of silk socks and stuff to slow the water down.
Okay, but the pollinators though, if the pollinators require sunlight and you put it underneath the panel, that's not going to work. Are you using a special pollinator or what, what are we doing there?
Yeah, the, the pollinator was designed with the, the solar farm in mind. The, the panels themselves are bifacial panels, which means that they, they, they've got a glass panel at the back rather than a, the polyurethane ones that you'd have seen. So there is sunlight that does come through, not full sunlight, but there is adequate sunlight and, because they're, to deal with albedo as well at the back.
Okay. Right, thank you, if I may ask.
But I think Alice would actually back me up there, that the, the vegetation is thicker, fuller, and better established in the areas that, that are directly under the panels rather than the areas in between that do get day, more of the sunlight.
Okay.
That, that's correct.
Thank you. Mr. Socrate?
Yeah, so, I mean, there are a lot of pollinators that are also annual and not perennial, so I guess, you know, I'm a big fan of what will grow is what the birds bring in.
Yeah.
Weeds and other things sort of take over over time, and it finds its ability to grow vegetation. And there's a lot of things that we see, whether it's dandelions or other things that are also pollinator-type plants that are more perennial-type, or just come up and see themselves, I don't know, it's just, same pollinators, you know, you put out a thing of flowers and it comes up and it doesn't come back the next year, so we just have to be concerned. I mean, and Alice, you would know that more than anybody, what they put down.
And, and to close off that concern, the, the pollinator was designed specifically with perennial rather than annual, because this is a longstanding program accredited by UMass Earth, and along with that is a pretty extensive operations and maintenance plan to do with invasive species and all that kind of management, to ensure that they are, native, native pollinators come back each year with sufficient coverage for it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
I just want to elaborate further on what Mr. Cook said. There is a very robust operation and maintenance plan, as it appears. So what, what's generally happening is they're trying to get one team off the project to close out the permit, so they get the operation and maintenance team onto the project to handle that moving forward. So that's kind of what brought this to us today.
Okay.
Just to elaborate further.
Mr. Marx?
Yeah, with the history of this project, my main concern is that the ground is stabilized and we don't experience what we experienced at the beginning of the project. I appreciate the expert coming in and guiding us in this decision, but that's, that's my main priority. Is there money in the bonding that guarantees that this is going to happen, that the project will stabilize?
Yeah, there's, there's multiple bonds on this project. Nothing's been given yet, yeah.
I think it's a $50,000 bond specifically for the vegetation that we're, and the basin work. We're, we're happy for that to, to, to remain in place while we get this, because most of the area of the, the solar array is, is vegetated with good coverage. There's just a couple of problem areas that, that we need to deal with, but those, those areas aren't massive. One of them is, would have no bearing on the stormwater, it's the area around the poles, and that's probably the largest area. There's another one that's a similar size that's in the center of the array, and then towards the, the far west of the site where the basins are, there's a, there's a little bit of work we need to do there with some additional topsoil being placed and the seeding there as well. And we've got some, some rust that have appeared as far as the, the stormwater that's, that's moved off the site.
May I ask a question for the chair?
Yes.
Is Ms. Webb their consultant, or it's our consultant? Well, then we have somebody on site who's, I mean, that's like having a peer review in a way, you know?
That's what we did, yeah.
So I put full faith in our consultant in this.
It's, it's possible in the future, Mr. Chairman, that the board wanted to see more oversight on the project, or some more during operation and maintenance or so. Yeah, it would be a bear of expense by the applicant.
Sure.
To, to, for our consultant to review it. All right, I think we found a pretty solid consultant.
We're comfortable and agree with that approach as well.
Yes, I would like to see that.
Yeah. How will we arrange a frequency or they just communicate or?
Well, at this point, we're really just looking at the Asbilly, I mean, the rest of the site, they looked at, there was a couple of minor comments that Mr. Walsh pointed out in his review, one of the trees was leaning that they needed to fix. But overall, we're looking for the board's general opinion about kind of project closure, really. Do they accept the Asbilly plan as presented? Would you like to see some of that seeding take, get some photographs for the next meeting, something like that? It's totally up to you guys, but I, I also put a lot of faith and, and respect into the consultant letters that we got from both Mr. Bush and Ms. Webb.
Yeah. So, what's the board's pleasure? I guess maybe first things first, if anyone's going to accept it to be a minor modification and.
A minor.
Yeah. A general consensus? Okay.
I think I'm watching that.
Okay, would anyone like to make a motion that this is a minor modification?
So moved. And I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Preston, second bid by Mr. Zwicker, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
And that's all they were asking for, was a minor modification, if not, right?
Well, I think, just, no, well, I think there was just us voting that their request is a minor modification.
Right.
To the plan, so now we would go forward with accepting or making any recommendations?
The board wishes to determine that the Asbilly plan is substantially, substantially complete, possibly pending the submission of photos to show that the landscape seeding is taken, and an opinion from our consultant to agree.
Yeah, fencing is up, all that stuff.
Yeah, I'm looking for 100% guarantee that, that the site is stabilized.
Yeah.
Before I accept the Asbilly. That's my opinion on it, due to the history of what we've gone through.
Yeah, it just, I.
Yeah. Do we have a month before our next meeting? That gives, when you said that two to four weeks, you think seeded possibly is that?
Do you mind if I just sort of interject here?
Yes.
So the, the, the permit that we need closed is now, is the building permit, rather than the, rather than the planning board. I absolutely understand the, the concern and want to have the, the site fully stabilized before the planning board wants to close out the permit. So what I would propose is that we sort of bench this until the, the late fall, we'll, we'll take care of all the stuff that needs to be done on site, then we'll have a, another visit from Alice to confirm that everything's in, and then we'll look at closing out the, the permit with the planning board at that point, when there's no repair work that needs to be done, because I'll need that to release bonds anyway if they, if, if things have been satisfied. So I think that, that kind of approach would, would suit everybody.
Would you like to reach out to the community development department around that time when you'd like to get on the agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So what I, what I hope to achieve from, from this is, because what I didn't want to do is go and do the repair work with the pollinator seed, and then you tell me that it, it couldn't be done. So first of all, I just wanted to find out whether you, you thought it would be a minor one and you'd be inclined to, to approve it if it meets the requirements. And I've kind of got the gist, but you, as long as the, the coverage is there and it, the site is operating as it should do, that you, you, you kind of agree that the, the pollinator's okay? Am I reading that wrong?
Yes. Yeah, we just agreed on a minor.
Yeah, so, so that's what I wanted to do, was be able to, to get that approval before I, I spent the, the money to, to get it repaired in that way.
Okay.
So, yeah, I'll reach out to Matt towards the end of the summer and see how things have progressed over the summer, and we may push it towards the, the fall if there's still some additional establishment that needs to happen. And Matt and I can, can talk with Ken about the, the agreement that we've had with you.
Okay. So the, the first vote was more, I just want to make sure if it's on the open, so that was kind of more accepting that the change is a minor change, so I think we would just want another motion to accept the minor change.
There's no other votes for now, they'll just come back every future.
Okay.
Consider minor changes.
And the minor change is for the pollination?
Yeah. I just want to make sure it's.
That's what the minor change is for, so that's on record, everyone knows it's for.
And the motions are.
Inside the.
All right. Anything else? All right, so we'll look forward to seeing you in the fall with a nice stable property.
Appreciate it. Take, appreciate you being here.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Bye.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional business B, accessory apartment extension, anything change on this? All look good.
It's like a shady thing.
Nothing did change on this. The board has previously at its discretion allowed this over 900 square foot accessory apartment. I don't have any issues with that.
Board, anything?
It's all the same, same relatives.
I'll entertain a motion to accept or approve the accessory apartment extension for 14 Shady Lane Extension. Motion made by Mr. Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Greco, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, all set.
I do not have a workshop's worth of subdivision stuff today, but I will provide, provide some form of update. Our MS4 stormwater permit was renewed by the board's selectmen on Tuesday. And speaking with our, our rep, I'm not going to try to butcher his last name, just call him Nick, we're going to have to strongly consider at least discussing, a lot of this, discussing a lot of the stormwater component elements and how they would be implemented into either our subdivision regs, zoning by laws, etc. Okay, so some of the things we're currently working on, subdivision regs, earth removal, which we started working on kind of towards the end of the year, are going to need to be impacted by stormwater regulations. So what I was going to ask the board is if we ask our consultant, our stormwater consultant to come in with us and discuss some of the things that we might want to consider adding to the bylaws, or at least discuss it in an open forum. I know there's some items of stormwater control in many towns, including us, that don't really see working with the type of community, depending on where it is. A lot of these things are regulated towards cities and a lot of the previous service involved, and they try to promote green infrastructure in cities because it's just They try to promote green infrastructure in cities because there's just those that are bad. All right, we have a lot of natural vegetation in this town, we have the state forest and whatnot. Some of the things might not make sense with us. But as I'm, as the dates and our deadlines are starting to approach, I think we should put more of a reference towards that because it's going to start impacting other things that we're working on.
I think we've kind of pushed off and held back for a few years now. Not much has happened, so.
I think it'd be wise just to at least kickstart the discussions by inviting Nick to our next meeting.
Through the chair, yeah. I mean, it's time to maybe start a dialogue and then see what it really is and see if we have the same results as last time.
Yeah, I think it just needs to be maybe more clear, like have them come in, like this is what needs, you know, these are the time, this is the timeline, this is our recommendation. You know, just something more blunt, you know.
What they recommend.
Yeah.
Well, what they recommend or want and what they're going to get can be two different things.
Yeah.
But the idea is, is, okay, we have, this is what we really want, but we might settle for this, and right now we're down here. So you've got to have that discussion.
And like what's the requirement?
The give and take and all of it. Like you said, a lot of that could just line, just get rid of it because you know it's not going to happen because of our location. Narrow it down to things that really matter and leave the rest alone.
Yeah, like for example, there's a lot of different ways you can do green infrastructure for stormwater improvements, but not all of them have to be rain gardens, you know? So what can we pick and choose to put into our regulations as advisable but not necessarily mandatory? There could be options instead of requirements.
Right.
So things that I'd just like to open a dialogue with the specialists about that stuff because we've already been talking about some ideas that we want to make amendments to, being a road width mandate, which is actually larger than what's already in here. That's technically not what stormwater management's looking for. They're looking for less impervious, but you know, it makes sense when you talk about practical things like snow.
Safety and.
Yeah, and we've got to, so having that dialogue with us would really help.
All right.
Next month is when you want to start on it, Matt?
I would, yes. And also folks might be on vacation, but I'm not.
Yeah, and probably not have as much on the agenda. I know that sometimes that discussion can go a little long. It's very involved, so.
We have the one continued hearing, the package store, and we'll have some decisions to sign. We don't have any new apps currently in our office for new care.
You're going to have somebody come in for the next meeting?
That's what I want to do, yes.
Do you need a vote on that or?
Just wanted to. It's a working meeting, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, through the chair. MS4 should be a big part of our dealing. I mean, in my opinion, it's very over regulatory. It's requiring a lot that, it just isn't financially feasible most of the time, but it's got to be in here because it's going to, it's not going away.
Yeah.
But I don't, I think they're very over regulatory, so I want, at the minimum we can do to.
Peas.
Qualify for it.
Yeah.
It's fine with me.
All right. Ongoing development, any updates on anything with the list?
Two things, Mr. Chairman. So, oh, actually, I'll give a light update on the cubes at the world.
Okay.
Does anyone notice what's been going on over there? They started putting some walls up.
Right, pouring concrete.
It's going to start looking like King Kong's cell. It's going to look like a really constructed. But they're also working on pouring concrete on the bridge. It started yesterday. So as all of us know, the traffic's been tough to deal with with the trucks going around to get to the site. Once the bridge is done at the end of this fall, possibly sooner, we could alleviate some of the local traffic that's hitting some of those other roads in northeast Maine and such, getting all the construction vehicles going through the bridge. It's actually moving on schedule despite the budget ballooning, but it is moving at a pretty good speed, so I'm happy to report that. Our stormwater consultant, Art Allen Conservation, has been on top of that project, making sure that they're, you probably saw some of the erosion controls that they've set up and they've seen the sides of the hills leading into the bridge that prevent erosion. So there haven't been any issues there so far, which is great. The other update I have is for the solar project on Oak Street. I'm sure many of you noticed that that project is under construction.
I'll recuse myself.
Good idea. So we did have a significant rain event last Saturday. I'm sure everyone was here for that. We got a lot of rain real quickly. That site is under construction and they haven't fully established all of the stormwater infrastructure yet, so some of it washed into the tire wash, which is a like a forty foot section of stone that's in the front where as the vehicles exit, they can't after tires as they get out. But a lot of the water ran, a lot of ponding, some of it ran on the road, so I was fortunate enough to get a call and some photos from the butter. Who I passed on to our consultant and the consultant went out to the site and also asked for the original stormwater calcs. Let me back up for a second. The consultant we used to review this project before it started was a company called Pear Corporation. And it's not the company that we're using to oversee the construction of this site, mainly because I am not providing at all. So Haley Ward, used to be Leonard Engineering, does a lot of our reviews for subdivisions and then construction projects in town. Corey Broder and Doug Bush are really good at this stuff. So they got engaged by us and are overseeing the project, but he maybe recommended some slight modifications to this because it seems that some of the stormwater is escaping out of the roadway and it possibly shouldn't be. So they're communicating with the solar developers now to try to rectify the situation. The building commissioner and I are very adamant on not letting them start racking until all of the stormwater infrastructure is.
Right.
And functioning. But they're very persistent. Let me say this, a lot of the folks that were part of the original approval are not with that team, and now there's a whole bunch of new folks managing a project that they weren't there for the approvals for. So there was a lot of miscommunication at first, but I think we've got everyone on the right form of communication at this point that Corey and Doug are handling the stormwater and Art Allen is handling anything involving the wells. So we've got a lot of eyes on the project and Ken Fraser's doing a real good job. Our building commissioner's doing a real good job making sure that they don't go farther than they're supposed to at this point. So it's a work in progress. When we get storms, while this thing is under construction, we're going to see some of the issues like we just had. So I just want to report to the board what we're at so far. So I will continue to do that as this project's under construction until the infrastructure's up.
Yeah, that's what is tough. Yeah. It's a tough one. The project's not done. It's just getting started and haven't had time to set up stormwater, but hopefully seems like we're on top of it, so. And good neighbors out there, so.
Yeah, I don't want to repeat it, but I'm like, the infrastructure and the stormwater has to be managed before they go any further. I'm not going to go through that again.
Agreed. Ken and I are on the same page about that, so. Moving on, would you like to come back?
Come back.
I have a brief update on earth removal of Pine Sand's stormwater case. Last meeting, Mr. Preston brought up some concerns about dust control in the site and the open earth removal special comments. So I had a chance to meet with Murray Bristol of Pine Sand and toured the site. I had been up there before.
You've never been up here?
At least not with a guide.
Massive site.
Yeah, it's pretty interesting. So I don't know the science behind sand and what it is, but the way it was explained to me is that all concrete companies are different and they like a certain, I called it a milkshake. All right, and they like it with a certain consistency or you don't. All right, that's how I dug it down for myself. So we kind of explained the open permit, the one in the front that you could see from the gas station is a two-part permit. It's a Douglas and an Oxford's permit. That was a little tough for us to govern at the same time. It's another town, but when you get to the other side, it's like a carved out pumpkin on that side, so they've kind of kept like almost a wall that they dug into. Looks like a carved pumpkin, I guess. So that's acting as a natural buffer to keep the dust from flowing right onto the street into the business across the way.
Everything stays right there.
So that permit's active. And then as you look at the entire site, there's a lot of different piles inside in the middle, all right, for different types of gravel, sand, whatever. And then our largest permit that's open is in the northeast corner of Budding 146 where it has another kind of carved out pumpkin look with the natural buffer to try to keep the sand from going on one side. And then as you get closer towards the back, there's an open permit sudden. It's a little sunken down a little bit further, but it is active and they're running the sand for that. So I think some of the concerns that really came up are really about the piles and where they're located on the inside, all right? And I'm going to look further into that and make sure they're stored in the right spots at one time. But I think when we had that big dust day a month ago or so, we got a couple of complaints. And I called, I sent an email right out to Andy and Murray, Andy Leonard and Murray Bristol, and within 10 minutes they responded, it's like, we've been running water trucks all day, we can't get ahead of this thing. And that was a real windy day and then after like three weeks of no rain.
Because the water trucks can't get on the piles, they're more in the parking lot.
There's a couple of things they do. They not only, they spray water, but there's also an opportunity on their piles. When you're in this industry, when wind takes that out, it's like taking money right out of you. So they have like a chemical that they try to put on the piles to keep that from going. And then they have the water trucks for some of the other areas, the different piles and whatnot.
It's like hairspray.
So, sure.
Pretty much. I wouldn't know, but.
There's also a big flat area there they were renting out to a reversal lock wall and another little stone. And they're no longer there, so they put that material down over this big flat area to keep that from turning up dust, which is kind of impressive because I was there on a dusty day this week, maybe yesterday, actually, and that wasn't moving at all. And I thought if wind was going to catch anything, it was going to catch that. But it was coming off the piles a little bit still. It's a very massive site. I think we're going to keep some eyes on it. I want to try to, and I was talking to Rich before the meeting starts, I don't know if we have consultants that are kind of monitoring these permits and it's probably the main reason to write it up in the first place. These permits were issued a little ahead of my time, so I'm going to see who reviewed them. It could have been cut.
Just a thought through the chair, is it, including the cubes, I mean, that's a massive site too. Is there any way, I mean, today with these drones and everything, is there any way that our board is, is there any value to it if they were to come back and on the screen sort of do a drone fly over and show us the property? You know, like the cubes, we could see what's going on from, you can't see it all from the ground, but it's illuminating when you see it from the sky.
We do ask for an ASBIL if it's ever like a.
We do at the closeout of any permits, absolutely. I would love.
Wouldn't that be amazing?
License.
But wouldn't that be amazing to see our sites in a drone standpoint?
That'd be great.
We can, I mean, it's cheap. It's not a big thing.
I don't know if anyone in our town hall is a drone pilot.
No, but we could ask them to do it.
I have someone who's a drone pilot.
Really?
But the site developers might have their own footage.
That's great.
They might have something going.
They want to know what they have.
Yeah.
It's just so like the national parks, you know what I mean? When you see it from the sky, I mean, it's big and they're doing it.
So I appreciate this being introduced at the last meeting and Mr. Bristol said he'd be happy to tour the site with any of the members and I kind of sent Mr. Preston up to meet with him, possibly tour the site and kind of put eyes on it too, so. It really helped seeing the permit and it myself, so now I can fully understand.
Well, in light of, excuse me, get through the chair, what might be coming down in the future? Just rumors, whatever. It would be good to get us a sense of the site so we understand, you know, where things are or the expanse of it. Where's 146? You know, where's Blackie Dam? You know, where is all that relative to something? I don't know, just a thought. I think it's great, so.
They do keep a lot of the Lumen topsoil that they took off originally to create this well that's in the back, so when it comes to the point where they're going to sell their, their close-up site, they have all that.
That's the Lumen still.
Sure. Seems like, seems like they got a good operation.
Yeah.
I think it would be helpful just to, I'm going to do a little further research to see how we've been policing these in the past and see what's, consultants are even tied to these permits at all.
And through the chair, I think Bill every now and then used to just take a run up. He used to give Jim a call or whatever and go up, like you just drive around. Take Joe. I mean, yeah, it's.
It's an active permit, you know?
Yeah, that's what I mean. And I recall Bill used to, every now and then would check up on it or especially when permits were coming due and changing hands and all that kind of stuff to make sure the stuff was all covered.
I'll say through the chair, Jim Payne, I always responded immediately to any.
You better believe it.
Ever came up through the board, complaints or whatever.
Anything.
And Andy seems to be the same way.
Yeah.
So it's always been a, I call it.
Straight trudle.
Good business to work with.
Yep, good business.
It's the one to go by.
Yes, very much so.
Thank you, Matthew.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Any other updates?
I have a second minutes, Mr. Chairman. There's a couple of changes that made. Under signatures 19, we signed this last meeting, but I don't know which one it was, and someone signed over everyone's signature. So we're going to do that one again.
You're going to do it again?
Yeah, and it's just.
You have the signature.
It's just not assigned. It's the A and R one, so the purpose of it is the registry needs to be able to see what your signature looks like, so when these things get to the registry, they know it's you who signed it. So sign it carefully, like, you know.
Should probably look to see who signed mine.
Just fill it in in your little designated slot that has your name on it.
How's Whiting's Reservoir doing?
That's very specific to it.
You hear from them at all?
Yeah, they, their plan, I'm glad you asked, through here, Mr. Chairman, Whiting Reservoir wants to put their road on for public acceptance in the spring.
Wow.
So they're done with homes. Now it's a matter of finishing off the rest of, I think there's only 24K left in the bonds to button up the last items on the road. And once they do that, they have to submit us their ASBILs and their road layout plans for October 1st to be considered for spring timing. And that is what Mr. Pace's plan is going.
How have they been keeping up with their retention ponds and keeping them clean? Has anybody been up there to look at them?
I haven't, I haven't been up there in a little bit, but they did remove the sacks and he is going to have to dig that basin down to the proper grade before he.
Yeah, because that was a mess back there.
And he still has to do that.
I wonder if we should have, if one of the, if we have someone take a ride through since there has been some heavy rainstorms and just make sure it's clean and.
It's not a bad idea.
Good.
Make sure the catchbasins are working and they're clean.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have consultants to run for that. If it's all right with you guys, I'd actually like him to do that after the fiscal year to start to mess with the invoicing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we haven't had an update from them in a while, so.
Well, that's why I kind of just threw it out there tonight. I knew town meeting, there was land exchange for those and this and that, and just curious how far along it really is up there.
All right. This is our signature page?
Yes, that is the one. Yeah, so you write your name and then you do the sign. I'll do the rest of it.
He's already in the second, you're already in the second page.
There's enough, there's enough.
How many lines you got?
So I mean, how many lines?
There's seven of us, right? We got one and one, two, three, four, five.
You saved me a couple on each.
There's eight lines.
So we're good. So we're good.
I'll skip down to the next one. All right, so everybody stay in their line.
Yes, stay in that little field. Stay as well.
It's a very distinctive signature, they'll know for sure it's mine.
The only other thing I have, Mr. Chairman, is I have 10A. This used to just read miscellaneous. I kind of took a page off of everyone else's agenda here and added, time sensitive items not reasonably anticipated before the meeting possible votes. There may be something that comes in in an emergency. We don't know, it could be a con application or whatever it is. If we have to take something that's not reasonably anticipated, then it provides more language for us to do so. Just kind of bolstered it.
Yeah, don't want to abuse it, but it's there if needed.
Right, exactly.
All right, minutes.
What you got, Mike?
Actually, I got three nights' worth of minutes, if you want. From March 23rd. Looked good to me, so I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for March 23rd, 2023.
Second.
Motion made for March 23rd by Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Marx. All, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Probably make sure, yeah, we're good. 23rd is all set.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for April 13, 2023.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Greco, second by Mr. Marx for the 13th, and Mike, you're absent. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
I was, oh, no. I was absent on that one, yeah.
One more.
Okay. Any?
Hold on for a second.
Hold on.
Are you at that?
You were there for that one.
I was there?
Yep. Mike was not.
All right.
That was Tracy.
All right, okay, yep, all right.
All right, so April 13th, that's all set, passed.
Are we ready for the third one?
Yes. Everyone was there for it.
Make a motion to approve the meeting minutes as written for April 27, 2023.
Motion made by Mr. Greco.
Hold on.
Standing by.
Attendance. Vice Chair Jake, Chair Tracy Sharkey joined remotely at 7:20. Ernie Sopret.
Where's it?
It says Ernie Sopret.
Ernie, so wait, we melded, it's a mind meld. Where's that?
Top line.
Nice.
Got it.
You're in disguise.
Correct.
Cognito.
So that should be Ernie Marks.
I would say.
No, it shouldn't. It says Ernie Sopret after that.
Um, yeah, I'm all set there, but you need to do.
I did not, I did not join remotely on anything.
No, that's Tracy.
Yeah, that's for Tracy. You were there though, wasn't Ernie?
I was there, but not remotely in.
No, yeah, the role, the role, it's fine, just the name.
Yeah, okay, just put Marks instead of Sopret.
So there was a motion, so I guess a motion with the change, as amended by Mr. Greco, I guess.
I'll stop you.
Seconded by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.